Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would all rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Busino?
Here.
Trustee Kryzminski is absent. Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey, here. Supervisor Dunn?
Here. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the agenda items. There are a couple changes.
Yes, Madam Supervisor. We have a proposed add-on under Engineering Department, item number 23. Proposed to move from consent agenda to new business under Assessing Department, item number 19. Proposed to remove item number eight from closed session. And proposed to move closed session items nine and 10 after public comments on the agenda.
Thank you. Anyone else have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to recommend that we table items 16, 17, and 18 until our next meeting, which I believe is January 8th. These items are three of the four that have to do with pay increases and benefits. I can't speak for the rest of the board, but in doing my due diligence to construct an informed vote on these items, I feel like there are many reasons why we should table them. First of all, the information contained in the packet references data that are not from our township, or data containing documents are not from our township, studies from six years ago, in reference to entities that I believe most of us are not familiar with. For example, I really need more time to see who exactly the Conference of Western Wayne is and why we're using them to justify pay raises. The clerk has offered to provide me with that information with discussions I've had with her. Secondly, I believe with all the positions that are being reviewed for pay raises, cost of living adjustments, et cetera, it may be wise to divide these decisions into more than three agenda items. For example, the decisions of salary increases for elected officials should be separated from their deputies. Not all positions, departments are equal, and one deputy just started in September, not sure they need a lot, cost of living adjustment just yet. Additionally, I think some definitions need to be cleaned up. Actually, I cannot vote for item 15 tonight without some language being clarified on that before the vote. Finally, I would like more time to have discussions with some department heads and my fellow board members about how some of these votes will impact labor relations within Town Hall. So again, I recommend that we table items 16, 17, and 18 until January 8th.
Madam Chair, if that's in the form of a motion, I'll support that.
We have a motion by Mr.?
Busino.
I'm sorry. Would you say that again?
No, I said if Tim was making that request in the form of a motion, then I would support.
Okay. Ms. Trustee Busino, can you make the approval of the agenda as recommended as the motion, please?
So, I would make a motion to approve the agenda and with tabling items 16, 17, and 18?
And the other proposed add-ons.
And the proposed add-ons. Thank you.
All right. Motion by Mr. Busino, supported by Ms. Nevers, to approve the amended agenda.
Yes.
I have a question. Can I ask now? You mentioned number 15, but then you didn't include it.
Well, and I'll explain that when I get to that. That item, I don't have an issue with because of the time period that the chief was hired, and I'll explain that when I get to that item. I do have a question about a definition of, we may have to add what retirement, actually the language of retirement is for the chief, so.
If you table it, we will not be speaking about it tonight.
I tabled 16, 17, and 18. Karen was asking me about 15.
He mentioned it, and then he didn't include it, so I was just clarifying it. He's not tabling that one.
Okay. Very well, there's a motion that's been seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Now, we have the approval of the bills. There are two bill runs. If anyone wishes an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, if there are no questions regarding the bill runs, I move that we approve both.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue, to authorize payment of both bill runs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have approval of the previous meeting minutes. Those are from December the 4th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Hearing now, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the previous meeting minutes from December the 4th, 2019, as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Smith, to approve the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The consent agenda items are routine matters that come before the board on a frequent basis. If you wish to discuss an item on the consent, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Posey. All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Smith? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have public comments. This is on agenda items only. If you wish to speak to the board, come to the podium, state your name, and remember there is a three-minute time limit.
You removed item 17 from the agenda, correct?
Postponed.
Anyone on an agenda item?
My name is John Nickel. I'm new to the township.
Sir? Sit down so you're speaking into the microphone.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Hi. John Nickel is my name. I'm a new resident in the township, and I wanted to make a comment regarding the items that Mr. Busino just apparently tabled regarding compensation.
Yes.
I read the Mr. Assorti's memo of December 10th on this subject.
Sir, sir, we've taken it off the agenda. If you want to speak later in the meeting, you can speak on it then. Right now, this is for agenda items only.
I thought that was an agenda item. Sorry.
That's okay.
There's a time later?
After item number 23 on the agenda, it opens the floor to non-agenda items.
Thank you. My apologies.
You're fine.
Anyone else? Very well, then, we will move on to new business, and we are going to go into closed session. We do need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Ms. Nevers. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. A roll call vote to go into closed session on item number nine. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Treasurer, or Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Busino?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Also, I need a roll call vote to go into closed session to discuss item number 10.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
I'll do, I have to do the roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Busino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. We are adjourned to closed session. We have returned from closed session. There were two items discussed. Ms. Posey, was there any motions on number nine?
Madam Supervisor, motion on item number nine is to authorize council to sign consent judgment.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Is there any motion on number 10?
On item number 10, motion to authorize council to sign consent judgment.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Ms. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries also. We are now back to the regular agenda, and Water and Sewer has a request for approval to renew the Michigan Department of Transportation Performance Resolution for government agencies for the construction permit for the operations within the state highway right-of-way. Mr. Wayne?
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and board members. As Supervisor stated, this is just the annual construction permit with M.D.O.T. There's no fees involved with this, and why it's on regular agenda instead of consent is they do require a resolution here.
Thank you.
I'm recommending we move forward.
Any questions about this? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve to renew the Michigan Department of Transportation Performance Resolution for government agencies, annual construction permit for operations within the state highway right-of-way, effective 12/5/2019 through 12/31/2020.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith. Would you call the roll?
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Busino?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. This resolution is adopted. Next, we have a request to approve construction pay estimate number five for 2019 sanitary sewer rehabilitation by FCIPP and SCIPP lining project in the amount of $169,924.50.
Thank you. Again, board members, Supervisor Dunn, Water and Sewers reviewed this as well as engineering. This will be payable to Insetraform Technologies. This will be paid cert number five in the amount of $169,924.50. Insetraform, this is the company that's doing the rehabbing of the sewers for this round of CIP work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is similar to the ones that we've been approving almost every board meeting, but are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the construction pay estimate number five, 2019 sanitary sewer rehabilitation by FCIPP and SCIPP lining project number 0249-0163 in the amount of $169,924.50.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Posey?
Ms. Nevers. Trustee Nevers.
Oh, Ms. Nevers?
Yes. Thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Next, we have Human Resources, and the first one is a request to advance employee from probationary status. Employee's number is 2539. Mr. Assorti?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a request to advance employee number 2539, who was hired on June 24th, 2019. The employee's successfully completed their probationary period. We've confirmed this with the department head relative to the position, and under the MAPE MTPEA, it would be appropriate at this time to advance from probationary status effective December 21, 2019. Of course, the probationary period would extend until that specific date. And I can answer any questions for you if you have any.
Thank you. This is fairly routine. Any questions for Mr. Assorti?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the advancement of employee number 2539 from probation as of December the 21st, 2019.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The next one is very similar.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a request to advance employee number 2550 from probationary status. The employee was hired on July 8th, 2019. They successfully completed their probationary term under their collective bargaining agreement, and at this time under the MAPE MTPEA agreement. It would be appropriate to advance the employee effective January 4, 2020. Again, this, of course, would mean that the probationary period would extend until that date, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for the board?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the advancement of employee number 2550 from probation as of January 4, 2020.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey, to advance employee number 2550. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. We are on now to the correction of the 2016 employment agreement with regard to retiree benefits, and this involves the fire chief. Mr. Assorti?
Madam Chair, members of the board, it's routine matters to review all matters through the end of the year. In some discussions, going through the fire chief's contract, we went back to the 2016 contract, and after some discussions with the fire chief, it was realized that certain language that had not been negotiated out of the contract was not included in the printed version from December 2016. And we went back, I've confirmed through all the human resources files, that contain his previous contracts that that was there. I've talked to all the individuals involved regarding the negotiations of the new contract in 2016, and it's been clear that that provision was not, it was not negotiated as to be removed, and therefore, it's my suggestion that you include it back in the agreement. Type for you in the package is the exact language that came from his previous agreement to be included in his new one, so I can answer any additional questions you might have.
Any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. Before we vote on this, I just got a question. The action requested that you put in the board packet said, "Motion to amend the Fire Chief's 2016 agreement to include retiree medical and hospitalization, dental, and vision insurance. The employer shall provide the employee with retiree medical and hospitalization, dental, and vision insurance, provided he retires under the provisions of a regular retirement under this agreement." I know what that means. I have it in my contract as a teacher, and it's laid out in our other contracts in the township. I don't see it, though, when I printed out the contract that's online. You mentioned we had some other ones back of, what is the formula that a regular retirement for the chief and for a postponed item, we're going to be facing the same question? Is it, for example, some of our other contracts might say, okay, you have to have 20 years, and at 50, 15 years, at 60. What is a regular retirement for a fire chief? How many years? How many?
Well, this language was taken from this, I'm not asking for his contract to be amended. I'm simply asking for administrative tasks that it be corrected so the documentation is correct. This is the exact language that was in his previous contract that was not negotiated out when the 2016 contract was agreed to.
Correct. So what's a regular retirement? Because if I, right now, vote to give the chief benefits into retirement, but there's no definition of what a regular retirement is, could he go out and retire tomorrow and get the full retirement benefits? I'm just saying, could we add something? What is, is it 20 years? Is that regular retirement? Is it? What is regular retirement in the township? Because we're going to be facing this again with a tabled item, and, I mean, could a deputy be hired and then three days later retire? What, how many? I don't see it in the contract when I print it out. I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, could we do that right now? What is a normal regular retirement for?
Well, I would think if you're going to, if you're going to make a modification to the employment agreement, that would be negotiated with the chief, but this is the regular retirement that's generally approved by the township that's handled, is that means that they retire and they provide appropriate notice to the township, meaning they're in good standing at the time they retire.
Right, but if we're giving somebody full lifetime benefits, I mean, I would want a certain amount of years to have put in before they retired. Is one, again, would we consider one year for retirement, five years for retirement? Could we negotiate that with the chief and maybe table this item and come back? I thought maybe we'd take care of that tonight. You know, again, is it fully paid benefits if you have 15 years of service, 20 years of service? Again, that's broken down for me as a public educator of how much I get into retirement based on years of service. I believe it's in some of our other union contracts, but what is regular retirement? Could we go back to the chief and talk about that and come back and, or see what we've said in the past? The amount, I mean, what is regular retirement? Is it a year worked? Does it 10 years worked? Does it? I think that language needs to be in the contract.
Well, Madam Chair, if I may. So when it was negotiated prior to 2016, it was in the agreement, you said. What was the definition of regular retirement? Like, in ours, it says age 62, and you have to be in position for three terms. So what is it for this contract that was negotiated?
Do you have the, I mean, we pulled it up. I don't, I don't have that, the previous agreement in front of me.
Under the terms of my current employment agreement, my retirement is subject to Act 345, which states 50 years, I'm sorry.
Not that many.
Age 50 and 10 years, or 25 years.
And, and just, just so we're clear, that's probably why this stuff was what left out, was because when we attached the benefits, the previous human resources director and I, and that came up on the other agenda item as well, we put in there, "Subject to Act 345," so.
Which is state law.
Right.
So, can you, can you do that again, real quick?
Well, any of the full-time firefighters that are under Act 345, which myself and the deputy chief both fall under, under Act 345, which is state law, it is 10 years of service and age fif, 10 years of service, age 60, 25 years of service, age 50.
Okay, and so, on the contract, it says if there's modifications to the contract, all parties are going to sign that? Would, I don't know if we can, would you have a problem with putting that exact language into the contract?
It already states, my retirement is subject to Act 345.
Okay, all right. Where, where does it say? Okay, even online, I don't think it mentions in the contract online, I didn't, I might have looked over that, I was looking for words retirement.
Appendix A, it states towards the bottom of the page, retirement. I believe it says something, "Subject to requirements of Act 345."
I printed up the whole thing, I couldn't find it. That's why I just want to make. Well, it says pension, Act 345 defined benefit pension program, that's all it says. It doesn't, doesn't use the word retirement or retirement benefits. All it says is pension, Act 345 defined pension program. Should we put that under definition? Should we put retirement, do, you know, Act 345, retirement service?
Madam Chair, the firefighters that are subject to 345, that's state law that establishes what those parameters are. You know, again, it wasn't my intent to modify the contract, it was just to correct the documentation and file with the township.
Oh, 100%. And, and that's why I couldn't find it, because it says nothing about retirement, so I'm like, why can't we, if we're adding, if we're adding this terminology, why can't we add the terminology of defining retirement? Why can't we do both at the same time? Because that's what we're doing right now, we're modifying something that was left off, correct? So why can't we add that? I don't understand the issue, I just think it would be common sense to have a definition of retirement on contract.
In my opinion, it says 345 pension, which is defined by law, and that would be...
We're not talking about pension, we're talking about health care benefits. What would be the problem of just putting retirement on there and defining retirement? I don't think a chief would have a problem with that, but I don't want to talk for you, but, I don't know, I mean...
Well, Madam Chair, in all fairness to the chief, I don't think it's appropriate that we negotiate terms of his contract up here.
Would you like to postpone this?
No, I would not.
Well, you asked for an agenda item, then we should go into closed session and discuss it then. If you want to go into closed session, you put on agenda item and want me to vote for it, I don't think, I'm out of line with what I'm asking for at all, defining retirement when we're going to give lifetime health care benefits for retirement. I really didn't think it would turn into something controversial, I thought it would just be, okay, something additional we could clean up. I didn't think it was going to turn into this, but, okay.
Madam Chair, if I may. Tom, I'm not familiar with the exact verbiage in Act 345. When they mention pension, is it, is it in reference of retirement? Is it the same thing? Is it defined anywhere in Act 345 that pension, retirement is the same thing?
Well, Act 345 is the state retirement program for police and firefighters.
So the name of it is the state retirement program?
Correct. For communities that have voted in Act 345, which Macomb Township did in the late 70s, I believe.
So, okay, so what brought us to this, okay, what brought us to this point, then, in adding this, if this pension in 345 just kind of covered it anyway? What brought us to this agenda item, then, if it was already covered in the contract? If pension, if pension, Act 345 defined pension program, including retirement health care benefits, is already in there, why does this say it was left out?
I don't believe that's what I said, Madam Chair. What I said was, this language was left out. The question you've asked several times is, what is regular retirement? Regular retirement is defined by Act 345, which is mentioned in the contract.
But, but then we went on to say that, under the definitions, retirement's not mentioned in the contract, but pension is, but pension does cover health care, too? I don't, I don't understand why we just couldn't put it in there. Just put, you know, put a definition of retirement. This is online, this is not, I mean, this is a contract that's online, I don't think we're negotiations, just as a list of definitions, why couldn't we list retirement for purposes of health care would, would be, and then reference Act 345?
I didn't suggest that you couldn't do it. All I suggested was, I don't think it's fair to the chief to negotiate terms with him in a public meeting, that's all. The board could...
You just, you just put it on agenda item to do just that. Vote on it, but don't discuss it?
No. Mr. Busino, as I indicated, what I put on the agenda was an administrative change to correct the documentation that's on file with the township. I never, I never requested any information relative to negotiating new terms of the contract.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Act 345 has its own attorney. I would like to suggest to Mr. Busino that he contact their attorney and get a clarification as to what Act 345 is, then I think he'd have a better understanding.
So if I could just point out, I've been asking over two and a half years to have this correction fixed, so.
Right, right, not me, though. I don't know who was being asked, I wasn't being asked, so.
Any other questions?
So you asked HR for two and a half years to fix it?
It's been discussed over two and a half years that it needs to be corrected and put back.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, if I may ask the question, since I don't think it's negotiating different terms, it's looking for a definition, is there any objection to including the word retirement in the motion to the amended information?
I, I don't.
Okay.
I have no objections.
Yeah.
Trustee Busino, why don't you make the motion to include the language that you're looking for that will help you feel satisfied with what's being amended?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, this is exactly why I tabled the other three items, because I think we have a lot more to work to do on those also. But, so, I would like to make a motion, well, so should I add to this motion? Can, give me a second to read what's being asked, because this is the action requested. The motion is a long motion. Motion to insert in the deputy's...
Mr. Busino, let's take a five-minute break for you to go over that, and then we'll be right back.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any motions on this number 15?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to insert into the dep, I'm sorry, into the Fire Chief's 2016 agreement to include... into the fire chief's 2016 agreement to include retiree, medical and hospitalization, dental and vision insurance. The employer shall provide the employee with retiree, medical and hospitalization, dental and vision insurance, provided he retires under the provisions of a regular retirement as defined by Act 345. This coverage will be paid for by the employer.
Motion by Mr. Busenow.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Number 16, 17, and 18 have been postponed. We will move on then to the assessing department, and this is real property tax exemptions and, excuse me, current guidelines for the property, poverty exemptions. Mr. Hickey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. This is agenda item, is for your approval for the 2020 poverty exemptions and guidelines. This is an annual occurrence that we have to approve by adoption. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? We have to do this every year by state law.
Correct.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve real property tax poverty exemption resolution in the current guideline for poverty exemption.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to adopt this resolution. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Busenow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted.
Thank you, board. This time, I'd like to recognize two of my employees in my department. Kim Patterson recently achieved her Level 4 certification, which is a Michigan Master Assessing Officer, and Peter Custone, who obtained the Level 3 certification, which is a Michigan Advanced Assessing Officer.
That probably makes us one of the best-staffed assessing department in the county, if not the state.
Very proud of them.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we will move on to the finance department, and this is regarding planning and zoning consulting services. Ms. Smith.
Good evening, excuse me. The finance department issued a request for a proposal for planning and zoning consulting services unmitigated. The solicitation went out on November 4th with a due date of November 22nd. The notice was viewed by 591 organizations, of which 42 organizations downloaded at least one of the planned documents, and we ended up on November 22nd with two bids that we received. An evaluation committee consisting of five members independently reviewed and scored the proposals, and then on December 6th, both companies were interviewed by the evaluating committee. Upon completion of the interviews and scoring, the committee is recommending Carlisle Wortman Associates, Inc. to be our planning and zoning consultants. And Mr. David Skurdo is here. He's going to be, he would be the point of contact for Macomb Township, and if you have any questions for him, he's available. So tonight, on behalf of the evaluation committee, I am requesting a motion to award the planning and zoning consulting services to Carlisle Wortman Associates, Inc., and to have the township supervisor enter into an agreement with them.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Supervisor, if I may. Ms. Smith, this is fairly new, using an evaluation committee. It's a process that we put in place to add extra measures for the bid process, safety measures. Could you explain to board members that may not be familiar with what these safety measures put in place for us during a bid, and also who was on this committee?
Sure. The evaluation committee for this proposal was Mr. Jim Van Tiflin, Crystal Kozak, Joe Maples, Charlie Oliver, and Patrick Maher. Once the bids are received, the evaluation team gets a copy of all proposals, along with a scoring sheet. They independently review them, they score them, they are anonymous. The only one that knows who received, or who she received them from would be our purchasing specialist. She then tabulates all the scores and combines them, and comes up with a top couple that we may choose to interview. Because we only received two in this case, we decided to interview both of them. Carlisle did come in at 90% out of 100, so they were well above the other firm that submitted a proposal.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very well, are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to award the planning and zoning consulting services to Carlisle Wortman Associates Incorporated, and have the supervisor enter an agreement with them.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Second.
Supported by Ms. Posey. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have the add-on from the engineering department, and this is a request to approve an extension of time for landscaping restoration for miscellaneous products incorporated. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Madam Chair, personal members of the board. This is a typical request that we get from developers this time of year, can't do landscaping work in December, so they are asking for an extension of time until June 1st of 2020. We've reviewed the request and are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve extension of time for landscaping restoration for miscellaneous products incorporated, building addition lots nine and 10 of Macomb Corporate Center.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the extension of time. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have public comments. This is on non-agenda items. Please come to the podium, state your name, and remember, there is a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, Mark Grabo. Address is on file with the clerk. Stacy, where'd she go? Great job, Stacy. You guys did a fabulous job. I'm glad to see that you actually put this together. There's just one question, is there a base rate, a monthly base rate for this?
It was in the packet.
Okay. It just wasn't mentioned verbally, so I know people would have a question on that. You did a phenomenal job. That's great work that you guys put together. At least, we're not going to have another questionable BPI or another legal issue. So, nice job. Great to see you guys doing the work that needed to be done correctly. Thank you, Stacy. Phenomenal.
Anyone else?
We provide handsouts.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kim Hemmy. I, I'm here with my neighbors. We're here to talk about the park proposal of Whitney Park at, located at Foss and 24 Mile Road, hence why we gave you the maps, because there's going to be some things that we're going to refer to it. A few of us have met with Mr. Jim Van Tiflin and Sal DeCaro last July, when we had seen the proposal for the park published in The Chronicle. Both of them were great in explaining what was going on with the park. We have concerns that we would like to also share with the board before the final draft is delivered and is decided upon. There is an, if there's an update to the proposal, because we would, because based on what we have seen, this has raised several fears for the surrounding area. If you could, please refer to the map where the blue arrows are. I would like to start talking about the outlined path marked N. That is along the back and the side of the park. The 10-foot wide path marked N is intended to link one park to the next, which none of the connecting parts have been developed yet. But once the Whitney Park is finished, it will directly intersect and therefore join the eight-foot sidewalks, which are in orange, marked M, along 24 and Foss roads. And if you know this area, there are currently no other sidewalks at all along the stretch of 24 and Foss. Since these two paths do not connect to any other trail for the unforeseeable future, the joining of paths N and M create a circular trail that therefore will only be used by parks' guests to track their mouths while jogging, running, and biking. Looking back at the map, the three houses on 24 Mile will now be living inside of the park due to, due to the circular loop. I can honestly say, I don't know of any other park around here that does that to its residents. If the circular route was to remain, as shown in the proposal, it should be the township's responsibility to maintain this eight-foot wide sidewalk, since it will only be used by the park's visitors. Second, if the circular park was to remain, we have been informed that a fence will not be provided along the front of the three houses. Waldenberg Park even has a stone fence in front of the property between the parking lot and the road, yet this location will not have anything. We ask the township to please revisit this on the final draft, and to please install a fence to keep the park's occupants from trespassing in our front yards. Again, that's only if the circular loop was to remain in the proposal. So the bottom line, what can the township do for these three houses to prevent from being trespassed upon? Maybe not put any of the sidewalks in marked N for now, until all other sidewalks installed along 24 and Foss, when this area is more developed. Maybe create other trails within the park boundaries to connect these pathways marked N for visitors to walk on and remain inside the park. We like to have a voice in this matter. We like to think the township wants to be good neighbors and work with us on all of our trepidations. This park will greatly impact these three homes, let alone all the other concerns you may hear this evening that will affect the community. We thank you for listening, and we hope the board will take these issues when the final draft is agreed upon. Thank you.
Hello, board members. My name is Dan Johnson, and my address is also on file. I would like to talk about the congestion that Whitney Park will create in this area. In the proposal, there are plans to put three of the most popular daily attractions in one location, the splash pad, the dog park, and the pickleball courts. The splash pad, opening day, the splash pad at Dodge Park in Utica received twice as many people and the amount expected due to its popularity. So what's the park's capacity for parking spaces? Say 150 parking spaces, but would if 300 cars show up? Then what? The dog park and the pickleball courts, both were initially proposed to have one of them to be located behind the fire station of 20, off 21 Mile. This was voted down because the local residents felt they couldn't handle the traffic flow either. But yet, we have Card Road and 25 Mile Road closed down with no future plans at all of opening, but the township wants to put a park in this location. Then we have number one, Waldenberg Park, two, Corners Park, and three, the property along Broughton Road. There is unused township-owned real estate, from what we can see, that can take on any of these attractions, instead of having all three at Whitney Park or at 24 Mile and Foss, which would create a parking lot type of traffic situation every day. We hope that the board will consider moving at least one or, if not two of them, to a different location, or to another site, to ease the future traffic in this area. I'd also like to mention the driveway location off of 24 Mile Road in the proposal. As shown on the current proposal, is located approximately 30 to 40 feet from the corner of the property at 2132524 Mile Road. This location is a huge concern for privacy. On the map, the driveway is curved to slow down drivers, though more pleasing to look at, speed bumps are proven to be more effective. Then, the driveway could be straightened out, as this would move it away from the personal property. Or maybe switch the location of, of the driveway with a drainage pond located next to it on the map. Another suggestion would be completely eliminate the driveway, because Corners Park, Walden Park have only one entrance, and they seem to be operating just fine. And in the future, if a traffic light was to be installed at 24 and Foss, not having two driveways into the park would then eliminate any possibility of drivers cutting through the park if there was a backup at the light. Whatever is decided, the current proposal is less than ideal, and since it will be adding onto the current congestion at this corner, what kind of gridlock will this park generate once Phase 2 is completed? It would be very wise to update the road's infrastructure first, before this park is even built. Please understand, we take this to heart. We reside here and live here. These decisions of the township, the decision that the township makes will affect our daily living for the rest of our lives, and since these are our forever homes. Thank you for listening to these issues that mostly affect the surrounding neighbors, but the community as well. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lee Bruner. I live at 21295 24 Mile Road, right in the middle of what a proposed park's going to be. I'd like to discuss the traffic in this area. The surrounding road infrastructure is not yet made to handle the current traffic flow, let alone have a busy park here. It's like pulling the cart before the horse. This area already has an increased traffic flow due to 25 and Card Roads, which are being closed, which you heard previous from Dan. But what we've learned, it would only take $2 to $3 million for the township to fix and pave these roads. The rest of the cost would fall on the county or state. Yet, we're spending $6 to $8 million on this park before making sure the roads can handle the future traffic flow. Then we have Broughton. When will that be connected to 24? That would at least ease the traffic on Foss if this park is done. And everybody here knows, 23 Mile Road's going to start up again in the spring, two years. Where you guys think that traffic's going to go? Right up 24, like it did the last year, for two years this time. 24 and Foss, we hear horns beeping all day, all night. And 24 and Card, too. Because of the vehicles traveling over 60, 65 Road on 24 Mile Road, there is no posted speed limit, and I probably, I don't know that either, between Romeo Plank and North Avenue, over two and a half miles. So that's a prima facie, I think I'm saying it right, officer, speed limit. I know he knows it, maybe the attorney. They can drive wherever they want, as long as they feel they're safe. We also have large farm equipment running down that road, which you should know. People's raising hell with them all the time, beeping the horns at them. What do you expect? These guys have been here for hundreds of years. They're entitled to have that road at their speed limit. Last night, I walked out to get my mail. At 5:06, I stood there for five minutes, I counted 117 vehicles passed in front of my house. 7:40 this morning, I was out there for seven minutes getting a paper. 132 vehicles. At noon, I sat there, watched my kitchen window. 201 vehicles between 12 and 12:30. Most of them turning to come down here. I know 24 is a county road, but I feel the township and the planning committee should have studied these issues a little bit more before they went on with this. It's very hard to get out on the, on the 24 from Foss or Card Road, if any of you have driven us many times during the day. And now this park, we had problems, and it'd be a rise in incidents and accidents. Before the township opens the park, should be considered how to make this area safer for all residents and local traffic. I hope no one gets hurt or killed because of the neglect of this study. Thank you very much for those who listened to me and paid attention.
Hello, my name is Terry Lewicki. I live on Foss Road. I really don't want to speak, but I feel that this issue is very important, and I like to voice my concerns. I am very upset about the park going in. I just moved in, and the park entrance on Foss Road is going to be directly across from my property, which I believe is letter A on your map. The congestion from the traffic is going to be extremely bad, and as the gentleman just said, it is very bad right now. There's actually drag racing going on the other day. The noise from the barking dogs from the dog park, the screaming kids from the splash pad, and all the other excessive people, I will never be able to sit outside and enjoy a nice summer day like the rest of you people do. As a daily driver at 24 and Foss, these roads cannot handle the traffic that the park is going to bring. And again, I'm really upset about this park. Like I said, I just moved here, and I'm so disappointed. Thank you. I just wanted to share my opinion.
John Parkinson, address is on file. First, I'd like to thank trustee Busenow for tabling agenda items 16, 17, and 18. Many residents want to know who proposed this, why, and why now. The next thing I'd like to do is apologize to Mr. The next thing I'd like to do is apologize to Mr. Phillips, Chief Phillips. I'm sorry that, for two and a half years, that you have asked to have your contract corrected, and our highly-paid HR director has failed you. I'm glad it got rectified tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diego Lorenzetti. I'm with the United States Census Bureau. And first of all, I would like to thank the committee for allowing me to speak. What I'm here for is I'm trying to recruit people to join the U.S. Census, to try to take accurate counts of our population, because that's a great thing for our community and for businesses for dividing up the money. So if anybody's interested, please see me outside, and I can give you some paperwork and show you how to sign up for it. If you're still interested and don't want to see me, go ahead on your computer to 2020census.gov, and you can get all the information you need from there. Thank you.
Hi, Mike Straightmans. I live on 24 Mile Road, where the park's gonna go in. And we're concerned about the barrier between the park and our property. They're talking about putting an eight-foot sidewalk right in front of our house, probably 40 feet from our front door. People in the park are gonna be walking by there all the time. We'd like to see some sort of physical barrier, if not a wall, then a fence put up to protect our property. We've installed security cameras, and we're very concerned about this. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Pippen-Brock. I live on Foss Road. I've been concerned for a number of years as the traffic increased along Foss Road, and the infrastructure cannot handle, I don't believe, the park. And also, my concern is for the increase in building and structures on Broughton Road. And have checked with the county, as well as the township, a number of times since 2016 to request that Broughton Road be put through to at least 24 Mile Road, so that the businesses, the township, traffic can at least go out to Main Road. And also, there needs to be a traffic light someplace, at least at Foss Road or at Broughton Road as it comes through to 24, before someone gets killed. Thank you.
My name is Dave Schneider. I live at 21525 24 Mile Road. If you try and make a left into my driveway, you take your life into your own hands. People cut us off on the right, go along on the left, and bear down with, I can't even tell you, half the time I end up pulling in my neighbor's driveway and turning around because I'm afraid I'm gonna get rear-ended, and I see people not stopping. I'm not objecting to a park, but I think the design, first of all, there is a big empty field across that looks like a dump, or was a dump, where you wouldn't have to tear up the woods. You could add an extra lane, a right-turn lane. But I agree with the people when I say, right now, 24 Mile Road does not have the infrastructure to handle the additional traffic. Right now, trying to make a left on our driveways is terrible, and if you have another few hundred cars trying to turn left on a summer day on 24 Mile Road, the traffic would be terrible in the morning at 5:00. We wake up to cars racing every morning. We keep our front windows closed because of the noise, and people do at least 65, 70 miles an hour on 24 Mile Road. That is not prepared. It should need to either a left-turn lane, a traffic circle, something before that park is built, where you're not taking your life into your hands pulling into it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Western. I'm sure that you will all be surprised to know that I'm not sure what I'm going to talk about tonight. Someone asked me in the lobby before the meeting, they said, "Last meeting of the year, right before Christmas, it'll be short, won't it?" I said, "Sure, it will." But you've given us a lot of material to react to. First of all, I want to say, good catch by Tim Busnau at the last meeting regarding going into closed sessions, and that he caught that you did not have enough people to vote to go into closed session. We appreciate it. We also appreciate your catch tonight, Tim, about the items that were to be crammed into the agenda tonight. I would be interested in knowing what inspired Tom Assorti or Janet Dunn to try and cram all of those items regarding compensation and retirement onto the last agenda item of the year, especially with the revelation that the chief was seeking to correct at least one of these items for the last two and a half years without success. We do get a little twitchy about the last meeting of the year, because it was three years ago that Tom Assorti waltzed you into a closed session to discuss his contract, and some of those actions would later be determined by the Circuit Court to have been illegal. So I guess we need to keep an eye on things. But the contract went forward nonetheless, because somebody came into a subsequent meeting, reenacted those illegal actions to make them legitimate. So we have this contract that we all live with now, and although it does say there'll be a performance review done annually, to my knowledge, there's not been a review of the contract nor a review of this employee's performance for the last three years. I have some suggestions if you do get around to evaluating that performance and that contract. First of all, to review how he presents written materials for this board and how they are written. I know I couldn't understand the backup material written for those tabled items tonight, and it appears that not all of you could either. Also, how much preparation does he give you ahead of time when there are important issues like this? I would also like to congratulate you for finally passing the new purchasing policy at the last meeting. And I want to quote the motion you passed from the minutes that you tonight approved. Motion by Tim Busnau, seconded by Nancy Nevers, "To approve the revised purchasing policy dated December 4, 2019, and that all board and trustees and employees adhere to the purchasing policy, so as to provide transparency and assurance to both the public and the vendors that the process and policy is followed for all expenditures throughout the township. Since it is applicable to all employees, we look for all the employees to follow suit and for your evaluation of Tom Assorti to make sure that he follows that purchasing policy in the future." I thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Paul Gerrier, address on file in the clerk's office. I want to thank Tim for getting Items 17 and 18 tabled. However, that's not good enough. Should be dismissed completely. Your range, your 2.5% to 2.8% increase immediately, it's crazy, in my opinion, it's 10 times what I received in the private sector this year. That's over $2,000 a year for the elected officials. And then your range is ludicrous, as far as 11% to 12% jumping up your pay. You want a pay increase? Why don't you put it in front of the voters and let the ballot decide whether you're worth that type of money? There's only one of you, the elected officials, up there that I think's earning her money. So it should be just not tabled, it should be disintegrated. As far as your confidential assistant, it's a brand-new employee. They even have their 90 days in yet, and you're gonna give them a pay raise? All you do is spend money.
Good evening again. My comments, as I indicated before, have to do with the Agenda Items Number 17 and 18, which already have been tabled. But after reading Mr. Assorti's memo in the packet, his memo dated December 10 on the subject, I wanted the board to be aware of some additional information that I believe was relevant, and I wasn't sure they were aware of. Mr. Assorti's memo states that the information contained in his summary is based on several factors, which include the June 11, 2019 recommendations by the Clinton Township Compensation Commission. A copy of that letter was attached as an exhibit. Mr. Assorti's summary, however, does not reveal that the Clinton Township Board of Trustees voted 7 to 0 on Monday, July 1, to reject the increases. That fact was reported in the Macomb Daily on July 1, 2019. That Macomb Daily article also goes on to state that Mr. Hogan, the chairman of the Compensation Commission, was dissatisfied with the commission's work, and he went on to make a number of recommendations as to a more comprehensive study. Since the matter is tabled, I'm sure that you'll perhaps read the article that I'm referring to, and I had hoped that it would be prudent for it to be tabled, and I'm very happy that Mr. Busnau and the rest of the board agreed to that and hopefully reevaluate those resolutions for your next meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well, we will move on to trustees' comments. Anyone?
Yes, Madam Chair, just got a couple things. I want to thank everybody who spoke at the microphone tonight. I have to say, over and over and over, it's not easy to get up there. I've been on that side of it. We saw tonight, a couple people were hesitant by even coming up. Please don't ever be hesitant to come to the mic. You know, I hope that everybody feels comfortable coming to the microphone. As far as the issues you raised, the planning issues, for me, is one of the toughest things as a trustee, to try to balance what residents want, try to balance, this doesn't necessarily have to do with the park, but balance what the law says if something is zoned and how we have to vote to put things there. I voted myself about a year ago to go forward with the project in the future that cuts a road that is not there right now, to finish, you know, basically finish Garfield Road, and it's gonna turn the back of my subdivision into some of that traffic congested area. So I'm always sensitive to those. It's really tough to balance going forward with parks, which I am a huge supporter of, but where to do it? And all I can say is stay engaged. We have people that listen all the time, okay? I can tell you, people do want parks, people want pickleball, they just do. But I know that, you know, especially in our engineering department, it's a great person to talk to about where we're putting stuff, and is always responsive to residents. But keep letting your voice heard. More than once, members of this board have voted based on resident input, I guarantee that. Keep voicing your opinion. Can't always promise a vote's always gonna turn out the way you want it, but keep voicing your opinion. I'm going to go back, lots of times when we have that many people speak, I'm gonna go back and watch a tape tonight, too. And thank you for the map. This is very good. For those of you who didn't see it, you know, I don't do stuff good as when I teach as far as explaining something, so thanks for walking us through that. Before I, you know, end on a positive note with the holidays, I do want to make sure that we, as a board, follow up with votes that we take. We do a pretty good job on that, but there are still some lingering things that we have voted on that we have not followed through with. One is longer than the other. I take my vote serious. We have people coming to the microphone, asking us to vote one way or the other. We have voted in October for an ethics ordinance. Part of that was to develop an ethics committee. I have not seen a lot of movement on that. Maybe it is on a day-to-day basis down in Town Hall. I haven't seen anything posted online. I'm hoping that we have some follow-up. I wanted to mention that last meeting, but there were only four of us here. I wanted to make sure as many of us on the board heard this. But we need to go forward with that. We have issues in the township, and giving people that outlet to go to the Ethics Committee is why we did that, and they need to know where to go. And now, we're two months into it, and there still isn't the outlet to take it. But we're gonna make sure we follow up with what we voted on. Also, I have not seen a performance review for our HR General Counsel that we voted on in May. This board voted to do that. There were some early discussions, positive discussions, some early contact made, actually from email, I think, to the employees, and then it just went away. I have not seen that evaluation. The board voted for a performance review in our HR General Counsel. So I take my vote seriously, and I hope we follow through. Outside of that, I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. I'm sure everybody on this board is going to do that tonight. Take some well-deserved time off. Hopefully, we get some snow, but it doesn't look like it. Looks like it's gonna be a warm Christmas. But again, wishing everybody Merry Christmas, and next time I see everybody, it'll be a new decade. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schneider?
Yes. I would just like to take this opportunity to wish everybody a blessed Christmas, and I hope a very Happy New Year. I did have a discussion with our supervisor regarding what I thought would be an appropriate way to analyze performances and so forth for our employees, and she was very receptive. My idea was taken from a job that I had for 35 years, where you do, you yourself present goals and objectives that you feel are appropriate for your job and that they are doable. And then you are judged by those same goals and those same objectives. It's an extremely fair process, because if you get other people involved in discussions about performance, personalities get into the mix. And we have a clear example with what's going on probably at this moment in Washington. So, again, I don't want to get too political, but just Merry Christmas to everyone, and I hope nobody comes down with this type of cold. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would just like to thank all the residents for being here tonight, and wish every one of you a very Merry Christmas, and to the board.
Thank you. Ms. Goody, Treasurer?
I know Mr. Hickey congratulated his and two employees, but I'd like to let the residents know how hard they worked to receive those accomplishments, and it was a long job and hard job to do, and we are extremely proud of them. Also, I want to remind the residents that the township offices will be closed from December the 24 through January 1, opening again on January 2. The Treasurer's Office will be open on December the 30, that is the Monday before New Year's, from 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. to take tax payments. So if there are any questions, please call our office. Thank you. And Merry Christmas. Forgot. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. First of all, I just want to inform all of you that look for the agenda, usually posted on the Wednesday prior to a meeting. The January 8 meeting agenda will not be posted until Friday, January 3, due to the holiday break. So we don't return back until that Thursday. We have to allow the department heads some extra time to get that information into the packet. I'm anticipating I'll get it out by the end of the day Thursday, depending on how much is submitted, but we will have it out on Friday on the website for the public to view. Also, I wanted to pass along, the Macomb County Chamber sent us a notification indicating that a Christmas Eve dinner is being offered free to anyone in need and to all veterans on December 24 from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Rec Bowl, which is located in Mount Clemens. So if you know of anybody that doesn't have someone to share Christmas with or is in need of a Christmas dinner, please share that information with them. It's being, it says here that the meals are being donated by local attorneys, and the servers include several judges and also Macomb County Executive Mark Hackel. So they're all donating their time and volunteering their time on Christmas Eve, so if you know anyone in need, please share that information with them. I would like to address all those who took time to come out tonight to express their concerns with regards to the park. I appreciate the information. Rest assured that we do meet, and we do discuss the items, as you've mentioned. Some of you have already spoken with our engineer, Mr. Van Tiflin, and expressed those concerns. He has already met with three of us. He has already met with three of us to discuss that there's been these concerns and issues. We are looking into making some appropriate changes and modifications, some that I think you'll be very pleased with. So sit tight. You have been heard. We are working on the issues. Also, we are working diligently with the Macomb County Department of Roads. Although we don't have jurisdiction of the roads, we work closely with them to make improvements. And Broughton has not been forgotten. We are still working on that and trying to make it a priority. We also have discussed a traffic light in that area. I do drive that area as well, so there is a need for it. And also, there's another issue. I will look into the street, the speed limit sign that's not posted. I'll see if there's something that we can do to get that posted. But we are looking into all of those things, and you have been heard. The landfill was mentioned, and if you could help me out with that, Mr. Van Tiflin? We are very limited in what we can do on that property, correct? Like, from what I understand, we can't go so, we can only go within a certain depth in the ground, because it is a landfill. Am I correct?
Well, currently, the agreement that we have with the authority that runs the landfill is that nothing can happen on that site, other than it's a landfill. So anything that we would want to do on that, that agreement would have to be renegotiated. But there's a significant amount of that property that is landfill, and we could not construct anything significant over the top of it, like a splash pad couldn't be, and the building associated couldn't be built over the trash, because it would continue to settle, and it just wouldn't work. There's a little bit of solid ground, but that's mostly in the area where the cemetery is, towards 24 Mile Road. And only a portion of it is actually owned by the township, about half of the landfill. I think it's 80 acres, I want to say.
Also, there was another comment, just for clarification, about the pickleball courts being moved from where Station, behind Station 1. That actually was voted down, because the cost of the bridge from the parking lot that we would have to install to connect to where the pickleball courts would go was extremely costly. And we found a different location that would allow us to include the courts without having to build a bridge. So just so you know why that technically was moved from there. I think that's, I probably didn't get to everybody, but I did the best that I could to answer your questions, and we will do our best to address all your concerns with regards to that area. Lastly, I do appreciate the concerns with regards to the compensations, recommendations that were on the agenda this evening. I do think that we can do a better job informing the residents as to where the numbers came from. It could be presented in a clearer manner, and maybe include some additional information. So I look forward to clarifying that for the trustees that had some questions and concerns, and presenting a package that is clear and understandable to everybody. And lastly, Merry Christmas, and have a Happy New Year.
Thank you. I only have a couple of things. DTE has informed the township that tree trimming is beginning for the obstruction of the electrical wires. This happens yearly, and is in different areas of the township. This year, it has already begun, and is located in this general location. Most of you people here tonight are about the park that's going to be built. I noticed the tree trimmers were on Foss Road. This morning, they were on 24 Mile Road. So they are out there legitimately. They have notified us what is going on. They're just trimming away from the wires. The other thing is, of course, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. And that concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, make a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by saying nay. Motion carries, and we are adjourned. Oh, 100%.